Good evening. I'd like to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Ms. Riska, can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Saroski.
Here.
Kosky.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Present.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Mr. Yanis.
Here.
And Mrs. Zarco.
Present.
Thank you, Council. We need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Moved to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. First item on our agenda is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you very much, Mayor. First, just a reminder that with Memorial Day coming up, we'll be closed on Monday, May 27th. That includes all city offices, a 41A District Court, and so on. There'll be no refuse collection on Monday, so refuse will be delayed for one day the entire week, and then Friday will be collected on Saturday. Also, speaking of Memorial Day, the Sterling Heights 40th Annual Memorial Day festivities will begin at 9:00 a.m. with a memorial ceremony in the courtyard between City Hall and the Police Department. The parade theme this year is celebrating and honoring women in the military. The ceremony will feature remarks from the 2019 Grand Marshal, Master Sergeant Hope Morpheu, Lieutenant Governor Garland Gilchrist, Senator Gary Peters, Senator Michael McDonald, our mayor, and the Arts Commission Chairman Jeannie Shabath will all be present and making comments, so we have a great lineup for the ceremony. Music from the Motor City Blend Chorus, formerly known as Sweet Adeline, and the First Michigan Colonel Fife and Drum Corps will also be added to the respectful patriotic tone of the event. And for more information on the ceremony, you can call 446-CITY. Of course, after the ceremony, the parade will begin, and I think many of you who have watched it or been there will agree, it's a fantastic parade, so look forward to that on Monday. And just a reminder regarding the fireworks lobby, because it is now more stringent than it has been in the past. So, state law prohibits the city from banning the use of consumer fireworks on the following days. So, on these following days, consumer-grade fireworks can be used, and that's the Saturday and Sunday immediately preceding Memorial Day. However, you cannot use, cannot use fireworks on Memorial Day. Fireworks are allowed June 29th to July 4th and July 5th if that date is a Friday, which is the case this year, or a Saturday, and the Saturday and Sunday immediately preceding Labor Day. And they can only, and also between 11:00 a.m. on December 31st until 1:00 a.m. on January 1st. Those are the only time periods in which fireworks can be used in Sterling Heights. So, this means that individuals have the right to use the types of fireworks that discharge into the air on these days only. I should note that the city has enacted an ordinance which prohibits the use of these consumer fireworks for the remaining days of the year. Not all communities do that. We do in Sterling Heights. So, if you want to know more about the firework restrictions, feel free to go to our website. And Mayor, I wanted to take just a minute to show a couple pictures from an exciting, interesting event that took place at our senior center. The Warren Consolidated School students were honored at the Festival of Arts Awards Ceremony on May 7th at our senior center. Students in kindergarten through 12th grade were recognized for their two- and three-dimensional artwork, and the event was sponsored by Warren Consolidated School Arts Educators. And this is a really unique program. We're so pleased to host it. It exposes seniors and our younger generation to art, of course, and it provides an opportunity to interact, and the seniors really enjoyed seeing this art display, and the kids had a great time as well. You could see the parents and family members enjoyed it as well. We had huge crowds at the senior center to enjoy all the artwork that the students made, and the school superintendent was at the ceremony. And it really, if you have a chance to look at some of the artwork, it's really fantastic, and we hope to host this again next year as well. And a sure sign of summer, the Dodge Park Farmers Market will officially open for the 2019 season on Thursday, June 6th. So, we're just a couple of weeks off. I'd like to take an opportunity to highlight some of the important points of the upcoming season. First, 52 vendor applications have been submitted. We have six new vendors this year, and we expect over 80 vendors by the season's end. A larger focus will be placed on the Kids' Corner, which will include a designated area in the market, a new craft each week, and organically bolstering the power of produce, which is called Pop Club, to expose young patrons to new fruits and vegetables and the importance of supporting local farmers. In addition to the annual event favorites such as the Market, Fit Day, Pet Parade, Touch a Truck, and cooking demonstrations, the market will feature a Polish festival on September 5th celebrating Polish music, cooking, and activities, plus a beer garden, thanks to the partnership with the American Polish Century Club. And finally, one of the more notable additions to the market will be six concert dates this summer that will coincide with Patio and Pints. Through the collaboration of the city, the Sterling Heights Regional Chamber Commerce and Industry, Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation, and more, patios and pints will produce a fun way for patrons to take in a concert in a less crowded setting while sampling locally brewed craft beer. Each week will feature a different brewery. Patios and Pints dates are June 20th to 27th, July 11th, August 8th, 15th, and 22nd. And again, you can go to our website to learn more about this. We think it'll be very popular and well-attended. So, again, look forward to the new edition of patios and pints. And Mayor, lastly, I just wanted to highlight this evening, many of you might have heard on the news, that the Fiat Chrysler Automotive Company is investing billions of dollars in southeastern Michigan, and that includes $160 million right here in Sterling Heights at the Sterling Heights stamping plant, which will add almost 80 new jobs to the Sterling stamping facility to support the new Jeep products at the Warren Truck and Mack plants. So, we have two facilities, two FCA facilities in Sterling Heights. One facility produces the Ram 1500 pickup truck. That plant has seen billions of dollars in new investments over the last few years. Between these new, or between the two facilities in Sterling Heights, FCA employs almost 10,000 employees in our city alone. And if you look at the economic impact of those 10,000 employees and the impact on the entire supply chain, not to mention all the activity you see along Van Dyke, new hotels, new residential units, new restaurants, new commercial establishments and the like, it's all part of the economic impact that comes from manufacturing. So, just those two FCA facilities create an economic impact in Sterling Heights alone in the region of $2.8 billion. So, you can see how important manufacturing is, not only to Sterling Heights, but certainly to the region. And that doesn't include the two Ford facilities in our community and all the other manufacturing that we have. Best of all, the jobs at these facilities now are very high-tech oriented jobs and well-paying jobs as well. So, we're pleased to have FCA and Ford Motor Company continuing to invest in Sterling Heights. And Mayor, that concludes my report this evening.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpool. Next item on our agenda tonight is a public hearing to consider the application by CCF Development LLC for a mixed-use planned unit development on approximately 10 acres of vacant property situated on the east side of Van Dyke, north of Riverland, PPCM-1207. We have a presentation from our city planner, Chris McLeod. Mr. McLeod.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. Vanderpool. As you know, Mr. Mayor, tonight is the public hearing for a planned unit development by the Caldean Community Foundation Development LLC for this mixed-use development. So, I was going to run through real quick in terms of what the PUD process is before I actually get into the actual application itself. The process that we're undergoing right now for PUD is for concept plan approval. Should the development ultimately be approved through the PUD, then it would go through our site plan review process. That would be administered administratively. And then there is timeframe set through the PUD process of obtaining the final site plan within 12 months, building permits within 18, and completing the project itself within 30 months of the initial approvals. Council may extend these time limits. So, again, this is a multi-step process. Again, the PUD process is designed to be flexible, designed to allow for alternative-type designs that our ordinance may not normally contemplate, which is what the applicant is utilizing the process for tonight. But again, if and when the project is approved, it would then be, go through our site, normal site plan review process administratively. So, overview of the application itself. The applicant is, was heard at the Planning Commission meeting of February 14th, 2019. They were postponed at that meeting to provide some additional information to make some minor tweaks to their application itself. The Planning Commission did recommend approval at their March 14th, 2019 meeting. Development itself is for 135 residential units with about 9,000 square feet of commercial space at the first floor of the building itself. And there's some ancillary uses that are specific to the residential units itself. There's a fitness center, a leasing center, again, that are specific to the tenant spaces themselves, of the residential tenant spaces. The gross floor area is about 129,000 square feet, and this development will be a mixture of one- and two-bedroom units. For making up those 135 residential units will be 63 one-bedroom and 72 two-bedroom. Again, the first floor will contain a multitude of uses, including residential, commercial, community room, fitness center, that office space I spoke of, and then the upper floors will be nothing but residential units. The location is within our C3 general business district and the FP floodplain district. This is in our overall corridor improvement authority on North Van Dyke, and there's a multitude of different zonings up there. This particular property, again, just happens to be zone C3 and FP. The majority of the property will remain undeveloped and is floodplain and wetland area, and the MDEQ has been heavily involved with this project already. I just want to note that this is somewhat unusual for our process. Usually, MDEQ approval comes later in the process, during our engineering review process. The applicant has actually been working with MDEQ for over a year now in terms of how to work through the site and the constraints that the site has, because it does have a number of environmental issues with it. So, these were some of the items that the Planning Commission dealt with. Parking in the floodplain, building facade, justification for number of parking spots, landscaping and traffic utilization on Van Dyke. So, we'll kind of hit on each one of those. Those were some of the main talking points that the Planning Commission had. And again, they ultimately found that the applicant addressed these satisfactorily and recommended approval. This is kind of the environmental plan for the site itself. On the left-hand portion of the site is the actual building itself. It's a V-shaped building that fronts on Van Dyke, pushed all the way up to basically the front property line, about eight feet off, parking behind the building. So, this is not a normal concept or a traditional layout that we've seen in the city. We have, we do have some buildings like this, but the one that makes it very unique is the fact that it takes this concept and maxes it out, so to speak. It's a true downtown-type building, and it's exactly what we're looking for in terms of the overall corridor improvement authority area up in that North Van Dyke district. Those gray shaded areas are actually wetland areas. And again, the DEQ has been reviewing this every step of the way with the Caldean Foundation as they've prepared their plans prior to them even bringing them to the city. So, the MDEQ is very aware of what's going on on this site and what the proposal is. Again, the parking right behind the building, so nestled in between the building itself and the environmental portions of the site, which will remain completely open. So, again, the site basically balances out at about three acres of development site and about seven acres of open space preserved at the rear. This kind of depicts it a little bit better. The green area, obviously, all green belt preserved area, and then the gray and white areas are developed portions, both building as well as parking lot. This is what the rendering that came forward from the Planning Commission was. The facade that faces to the left, as you can see, is the Van Dyck frontage. The facade facing to the right is that which would face Riverland Shopping Center, again, showing a four-story building, multitude of materials, kind of showing a very modernistic design approach. Very attractive architecture provides balconies around the building itself for a number of the units, and then also providing a lot of in-and-outs and fenestration in the building facade itself, providing a lot of architectural interest as you go through brick, hardy board siding, paneling as well. So, there's a multitude of materials that are also being utilized. I use this picture to also kind of describe. As you can see along the Van Dyck frontage, that facade, there's a patio space that's provided there. So, as this building fronts on Van Dyck, again, being so close to the road itself, you won't see parking in front of the building. This is reserved for pedestrian-type use. Again, the idea of the CIA or the Corridor Improvement Authority is to create a much more pedestrian-oriented environment. This, again, maximizes that concept, provides that plaza space. You'll enter the space and then can go into the first floor retail units along Van Dyck. Again, there's some of the fitness areas that'll be specific to the residential units that are also on this first floor, and then you won't hit residential until you hit the second floor or as you go along or deep into the property along Riverland towards the right-hand side of the screen. This shows the overall floor plan. So, the top portion of the site or of this drawing is the retail portion. Again, that's about 9,000 square feet, again, showing, we'll flip one down, one more. So, the red arrows here, again, the same floor plan, the red arrows here show retail entrances to that portion of the building. So, there will be pedestrian entrances from the Van Dyck side as well as the backside of the building where the cars will be parked. The yellow arrows represent residential entrances to the building. So, obviously, once you get to the second floor, there's residential all across the building. So, there has to be entrances at each portion of the building. The residential on the first floor is to the bottom right-hand side, if you will, where it's really kind of chopped up. Those are the individual units. The orange entrances are those accessory uses that are specific to the residential tenants, the fitness center, the community center, the leasing office, and the candle cauldron down at the corner. And then the E stands for elevator. There's obviously going to be an elevator provide upper-floor access to the units themselves. But again, kind of showing the overall floor plan, then this is just the first one. As soon as you go to two, three, and four, then it just simply fills in with all residential units. This depicts a typical unit itself. Again, these units will be a mixture of one bedrooms and two bedrooms, just about 50/50 in terms of their overall configuration. And unit sizes range anywhere from about just over 600 square feet to just over 900 square feet in terms of the overall unit size themselves. This proposed the landscape plan, again, lining kind of the outside of the site with landscaping. Again, this is different than our normal type development that we see within the city that has larger setbacks. Typically, we'd have a 35-foot green belt that has a lot of landscaping in it and so forth. Again, this pushes the building all the way up. It creates a much more urban environment, so you have to transition your mindset to a more urban landscape environment where the quality becomes more pertinent and more intensity in those areas that are remained as green belt. So, the applicant worked with the Planning Commission to increase the amount of landscaping on the site that being proposed there. So, with that, again, the Planning Commission ultimately recommended approval of the PUD agreement, and the PUD plans is presented. The applicant has reviewed and has, we have drafted a PUD agreement for this particular development. So, as part of that overall development, if it's approved, both the developer and city would be locked into a proposal. Therefore, any changes that did occur would have to come most likely back before city council. But again, the development agreement would be tied to the property and tied to both parties involved with it. So, with that, I'd be more than glad to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. McLeod. See representatives from the applicant here. Would you like to make any comments beforehand or would just be available for questions afterwards? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Manah. Then I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Thank you, Mrs. Marsonak first.
Good evening, members of council and Mr. Chairman. Before I start, Chris, you've got to learn to speak up. It sounds good over the TV, but we can't hear you back here. And I know I'm losing my hearing, but it would be nice to hear what you said. I hope all of you had a chance to read the MDEQ permit that I gave to all of you on the May 7th meeting. If you did, you could see that these are very strict rules regarding properties on a floodplain and wetland. Now, I have some questions that need to be answered, and I hope they do get answered tonight. Who owns the land for this project? I know it says the CCF Development LLC, but who also owns, who's going to own the building for this project? Two different things. And speaking of the LLC, maybe Mr. Manah can explain what the, what kind of LLC is it? Is it a single-member LLC or a multi-member LLC? Is this LLC a taxable, taxed as an S corp? And if it's going to be a multi-member LLC, how many members are involved and who are the members? Now, what portion, what percent portion of this project is for profit? What percent portion of this project is for nonprofit? Now, the February 14th Planning Commission meeting, the apartment sizes were addressed. However, I have questions that never got answered when I was at that meeting. How many persons will be living in the one-bedroom apartment? How many persons will be living in the two-bedroom apartment per the contractual tenant lease agreement? That has to be answered. Now, being this property is in the CIA district, meaning the Corridor Improvement Authority. What are the plans for this CCF Development LLC, the CCF Development Company LLC? What are they for, plans for receiving any benefits from the CIA? If so, what percent of this project will be taxable and thereby paying into the CIA fund in order to receive some of those benefits? Because that's how it works. Now, because the three dredged retention ponds, that's going to happen if it gets, if this passes, are on the wetlands, these are not, this is, this land is not going to be usable at all, period, end of story. And it will also filter into the Clinton River. Let's keep that in mind. Now, the question that I have too, what loans is this group applying for? What banks are they dealing with? And are three dumpsters going to be enough for 135-unit apartment plus retail? And by the way, what kind of retail is it? Because I only saw that they were going to have exercise rooms and that kind of stuff. What is the fire department's opinion regarding one elevator for 135 units? I mean, really? Now, who from the city is going to supervise this project to be sure that all MDEQ rules are going to be adhered to? Because Mr. Manah from the Caldean Community Foundation has a trust and credibility issue, and the example is the 15-mile project and his reneging on a consent on the project there for 15-mile that he agreed to. Now, as you know, if you paid attention to the news, our country has had, we've witnessed unprecedented flooding these past few months, and it's not stopping, it seems like. But has this city not learned any lessons from the past administrations and councils? Are we going to make the same mistakes they did? And I'll give you the example, Riverland Apartments. By the way, I have pictures to show you from the last big flood. They're on my phone, and I don't know how to do it. I'm going to leave you with this, Mr. Taylor. I will part with what I said at the last, at the Planning Commission meeting. Suck it up, Sterling Heights. Not all parcels of land in the city can be or should be developed. Just suck it up.
Thank you. Who'd like to be next? Mr. Cavalli?
Yes, Nick Cavalli of Sterling Heights. Honestly, I'm going to keep it short and sweet. This is a beautiful development. I think this is a great use of the land that we have there, and I wish all the best to Mr. Manah and the CCF.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cavalli. Yes, it's take you next, sir.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm happy to be here, and I'm happy to provide a unique view of the community that's sponsoring this project. I am a teacher, a certified teacher for the state of Michigan for the disabled, and my job in the state and the tri-county area is developing individuals when they run into a challenge, blindness specifically being the big one that I work with, and becoming full-supporting, self-sufficient individuals in the community. The Community Foundation, the Caldean Foundation, has been working with refugees coming in, and I've been working with that community for a little over six years now, and I was not familiar with the Caldean community before I was introduced to them. I can say that I've been in more than 500 or 600 houses in the last 10 years, going back to these homes, meeting with the people, and helping them. And the Caldean group that I've been exposed to have been especially, I don't know how to put this, spotless, clean, almost showplaces that I walk into, and I'm greeted with cookies and candies and niceness. But most important, they're eager to learn, develop, and become independent. And we've had two remarkable cases that I've been involved with that the Caldean group sponsored that have become certified teachers. One has become a certified teacher in a year and a half for the state of Michigan, and that qualifies them to earn in the $40 to $130 an hour range contracting with the state to teach others in this community. Another is well on his way to achieving that goal. So, they're not only, they're contributing members and working against great challenges. One of the gentlemen, his name is Raed. When I first met him, told me about running outside of his house in a wreck and a mortar went off and being splashed with glass. And you've got to remember, he's blind, no light perception, tripping over bodies. He had never been to a school in his whole life, and he was 20 when he was introduced to me. Raed is exceptional. He has learned the language. He has mastered technology and all sorts of things. This is just one example of many examples that I could give. I'm not going to take up your time with a bunch of examples but to say you're blessed with this community among you, with the good that they do among you. And I've introduced to them people, other people in the community of need, and they've embraced them and helped them, regardless of religion, race, or whatever. They've stepped in and helped them. They've stepped in and helped them, and I just wanted to be able to say that to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Who'd like to be next?
Good evening. I'm Barbara Gates. I live in Riverland Woods Apartments. I've lived there for 33 years. I face north where all of this will be. When someone, when the other lady mentioned about checking on the floodwaters and so forth, I hope the folks that are planning this have been there for the last two weeks. I also, looking at your drawings, Mr. McLeod, where are the cars going to be parked? And what kind of border are you going to put between Riverland Apartments and your, the other facility?
Ma'am, she, he's not going to respond to questions.
Okay.
It's just not how our rules work. So if you, if you want to make your comments, and I'll write them down, the council will, and he'll take them.
Okay. No, because looking at the drawings, I couldn't determine where parking was supposed to be and that sort of thing. And I wish them well as far as the floodwaters are concerned. I do enjoy my apartment. I like looking at the trees. However, I really don't want to look at someone's garage either.
Anyone else on this item? Yes, sir.
My name is Leon Bodnar. I lived in Sterling Heights for 44 years. Isn't it time to quit with this Caldean stuff?
Sir, that's completely out of order. I don't know what you mean by that, but...
Well, let me talk, okay?
Well, you can talk, but you're not going to talk if it's about making denigrating remarks about the Caldean community or about any other ethnic community here.
I talked to, I don't want to talk to you. I talked to Mr. Vanderpoel. Remember me? Two years ago? Where I was considering, on all my neighbors, they were frightened because of all the Caldeans coming into the...
All right, you're out of order. I'm calling you out of order. You can go sit back down, or you can leave the meeting. This is not acceptable, absolutely unacceptable.
Why?
I'm not going to argue...
I don't have, I don't have a freedom of speech?
You have freedom of speech, but you are not going to violate our council rules. You're not going to sit here and talk about the Caldean community as if there's something to be concerned about, afraid of, or anything like that.
Sit down, Ben.
So, sir, you can sit down, or the police are going to escort you out. But one way or the other, you're not going to be up here commenting anymore. I've called you out of order. My colleagues can overrule me if they so choose, but that's the ruling I've made. So you can either sit down, or the police can escort you out.
This is a sorry, sorry police in America in Sterling Heights.
Who'd like to be next?
Good evening, council, mayor. My name is Phyllis Harbaugh, and I've been a resident of Sterling Heights for 37 years. Kind of wrote down my thoughts to keep focused. I first became involved with the Caldean Community Foundation in 2015 when I was asked to teach an American Sign Language class to their clients that were hearing, had hearing loss. I've been in Sterling Heights and through our church have been in deaf ministry for 30-plus years. So I was quite honored when I was asked to teach a class for the refugees and the clients of the Caldean Community Foundation. And it was quite surprising because it was hard to teach them American Sign Language when most of them did not know English. So I found myself teaching, I don't know what I'm teaching, English ASL, anyway. So for the last four and a half years or so, I've been teaching through the foundation this class. I attend many of their events that they plan...
Ms. Harbaugh?
Yes.
I just want to hold your time for a minute. We are speaking a lot about the Caldean people here.
Yes.
And I think the Caldean people are great people.
I'm, I'm sorry.
They're wonderful neighbors. They're tremendous. They're civic, you know, oriented. They're business leaders. This is a land use issue that's in front of us today. Now, we're looking at doing a, a unique land use here in the city of Sterling Heights. So just as that gentleman was out of order for attacking the Caldean community, I want to, I want to try to steer this, you know, I let it go a little bit with, with the individual who spoke third, but really, we should be focusing on the land use aspects of this.
Okay. Fine. I'm just relating my relationship to the foundation itself.
I understand.
Okay. All right. Well, my, my point is, as I have attended the events, I have found and noticed an increase in the needs of the number of clients that they help, and a great increase in the trying to help them, anybody, not just Caldeans, but anyone that goes through their services. And housing is a big issue for that. And even in our deaf community here in our city, we've, we struggle sometimes with the same issues. But my thoughts are, I feel like as a citizen of Sterling Heights, I would hope that we can continue to make our city a place for all people of all nations, that we can live together in harmony, wherever that would be in our city, and that we will strive to raise our families the best we can for God and our country. And I believe that these types of things, whoever builds apartments, we have it going up all over our city. I think it's an asset to our city because it means people are coming to Sterling Heights. And Sterling Heights can be a great place to live if all of us as citizens unite together for the one goal of doing the best we can to raise our families in the city of Sterling Heights. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Anyone else? I'll take you, ma'am.
My name is Pamela Palmer, and I live at 8542 Clinton River Road. I've lived in Sterling Heights since 1976 and in this house for eight years. When I first got the notification of a building going up on that property, it's directly across the river, right out my living room window, and I had a statement all prepared that I was going to complain and worry about the wildlife and worry about my view and all this stuff. I'm happy to have come tonight because a lot of my questions were answered. As far as they're only using the front part of the property, the, the wildlife habitat is not going to be disturbed as much as I feared. My question right now is also as to the parking. Are there going to be enough trees or, you know, blocking that there's not going to be light pollution on my side of the river? I, I'm one that can't close my curtains. I just can't feel closed in like that. But I want to thank you for the good presentation, and it does seem that there was a lot of thought put into this, and I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else on this item? Yes, Mr. Bealan?
Mayor, councilman, almost everybody knows me that's up there. I'm the VFW commander that, we're located just north of this area, and there's a couple of things that I would like to make sure they are addressed. I mean, when we have a meeting, I guarantee you that every hour of every day that you got traffic that's backed up. So I could guarantee you that this place is going to have the same problem getting out egress to the place. I talked to one city council person here. He was under the impression that there was only 128 units. I heard today, 135 units. I also heard that there is, this is supposed to be a low-income facility. Okay? If that's the case, what about the homeless veterans? Are they going to be able to house in this, or is this what I'm hearing? It's Caldean only, which, which is wrong. If we're taking tax dollars and putting into this development, don't you think that everybody should have equal opportunity at this facility? I'm not talking just veterans, but because I am the commander, I'm going to speak for the veterans, and that's one of the biggest things. I don't think that there's going to be enough parking for that, I mean, for the 135 units. Then you're going to have, what about the parking for the retail place? Are they going to park across the street? They should have plenty, ample parking for their area themselves. I could guarantee you that there's going to be a problem with somebody crossing the street and possibly getting hit. So you've got a liability issue. Are they going to come back to Sterling Heights City and sue the city because you okay to have that and there's not enough parking? Or are you, or are you going to say they could just go down the street and park at somebody else's property? Obviously, that is trespassing if you don't have room there. So I don't know. Have these been addressed to local places? That's all I need to say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Take you next.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Wayne Wagner. I'm an attorney and represent Riverland Woods Apartments. I'm not here to express our opposition to the project, but simply concern how it may impact our, our residents and our property. As somebody already spoke, we experienced some regular flooding in the back from the Clinton River, and part of the concern is whether that, this project will adequately contain its surface water so that it doesn't negatively impact us. We would like to be involved to some extent in the, in the site plan process, so we're sure that there's some kind of decorative fencing or replacing the fencing that separates the property so that there's not a construction road that's impacting our residents, so that we can end up with a good project and a good harmonious community here. So obviously, it's, with the engineering that's gone into this, it seems like they're addressing many of these concerns, but there's always an issue in implementing those, those specs and making sure that it's not going to impact during the construction and after the construction. So again, we'd ask that we have some involvement in the site plan process when that arrives, if it arrives. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Anyone else under the public hearing? Mrs. Godfrey?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Linda Godfrey. I've been a resident of the city for 43 years and also a former councilwoman, and so I've been involved in a number of planning issues in this city. I have attended the, both of the planning commission meetings, one on the 14th of February and the one on the 14th of March. The issue that I have with the planning commission is with actually the administration and the lack of information that was given to the planning commission on this said project. The DEQ report was not presented to the planning commission, nor was the geotechnical report that was submitted to the planning department by the CCF Foundation representatives. Why, I don't know. I presented the report of the DEQ to the planning commission. Mrs. Marsonak made the copies. I presented it to them. Every bit of information is pertinent to this current project. The lack of information given to them in regard to the CIA or the Corridor Improvement Authority was lacking. Who is responsible for starting this in the first place and proposing that parcel of property to the CCF? In my opinion, this parcel is too, excuse me, the development is too intense for the property in question. It's not a question of the services and the good that's provided by the community or the Caldean Community Foundation, because indeed, they deserve a number of gold stars. This issue has to do with land and the impact on the surrounding area, the wetlands, the dredging of the property in the back in three different areas without replacement, addition of flowing of toxic materials into the Clinton River based on the retention pond at the face of the building in the back, from a five-inch pipe to a three-inch pipe filtering into the land. I could go on and on because I have so much information, but I'm only given four minutes, of which, if you saw fit, to grant me additional time, that would be appreciated. I believe that there should be an intense, complete impact study done and request that a postponement take place. A traffic study was not done. Mr. McLeod presented you with 26, 25 to 26,000 cars per day traversing North Van Dyke. But when you go online and you look at some COGS reports, they're dated 2012, '13, and it said 22,000 cars. So we're going to fast forward to 2019. Did he pull that figure out of the air as an estimate? Because I have not seen any current reports from SOMCOG regarding that parcel of property. What about pedestrian safety? What about the flooding in the area? What about the liability issues of which I raised during the planning commission meeting? And the biggest thing here is, on March 15th of this year, there was an opinion and a ruling that came down from the state, and it involved Nessel. And what the state had done under Schutte is that we were enjoined with additional states not to adhere to a number of the Clean Water Act under FEMA.
All right. Ms. Godfrey.
I need to finish this mic, please. May I have a...
You can have about 10 seconds.
What it says is that Ms. Nessel withdrew the state from the enjoined federal suit, the federal law, which means that this city is, and it's issued by the EPA and the Army Corps of Engineers, that we are to adhere to the waters of the United States, otherwise known as the Clean Water Act.
Okay.
So that's to be added to the DEQ report, which there may be some additional information that is going to be required. I understand.
Okay, Ms. Godfrey, your time is up. I've given you a lot of leeway here. Please, don't make me go through this again.
Make me, make you what?
You know exactly what, Ms. Godfrey.
Michael.
Please. I'm asking you to be respectful of our council rules. Is there anyone who'd like to speak next on this item? Yes, sir.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Jason Dora. I live at 3527 Yardley Court, Sterling Heights, Michigan. I've been a resident here for over 15 years. I think the development would be a great resource to the city of Sterling Heights, and I think it would revitalize that part of town, and I think it would have good economic benefits for the city of Sterling Heights. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else under the public hearing? Yes, ma'am, in the back? You know, these do work if, if you want, if you can...
Well, the only thing, can everyone hear me?
They might be able to hear you, but I wanted to make sure that the television audience can too, and they won't be able to hear you unless, unless you're up close to one of these. So if that one, if we can accommodate you there...
Okay. If this development is where I think it is, which is north of Riverland, it's where the old Krogers used to be. I think this is an awesome idea. That place has been empty for God knows how long, and as long as that bus stop isn't impeded, I say go for it. And the Caldean community is a great community, and I just think it would be a great idea. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay. Thank you very much, ma'am. Anyone else under the public hearing? Yes, Ms.?
My name is Stacy. I have been a resident of Sterling Heights for 20 years, and I just want to express my support for the Caldean Community Foundation Housing Project Development on Van Dyke. I know the community very well, and I also know that the Caldean Community Foundation has assisted thousands of individuals in need and have placed them on a pathway to stability. I also believe that this housing project will do the same and provide housing to hundreds of individuals in need, not only those from the Caldean community. Again, I am in complete support of this project. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yep?
Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Rand, and I'm a current resident of Sterling Heights. I live at 35270 Davison Street in Sterling Heights. I'm very familiar with the Caldean Community Foundation and their services and what they offer to the community and others, and I am in full support of the new development because it will be a great asset to the community at large. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello. My name is Mariana Kachula, and I've lived in Sterling Heights my whole life. I feel this organization, the CCF, is enhancing the living in this community and having...
My name is Mariana Kachula, and I've lived in Sterling Heights my whole life. I feel this organization, the CCF, is enhancing the living in this community, and having a beautiful residential development like this will enhance more people to live there and will enhance the status of the businesses in the community as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Manal Raban, and I live at 40411 Gulliver Drive, Sterling Heights, Michigan, and I am very familiar with the Caldean Community Foundation organization and the amount of assistance that they provide to people in need of assistance. I am fairly sure that the construction of this facility will attract more residents to our city, and it will be a welcoming change to the area. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else in the public hearing? If, Ms. Kachula? Okay.
My name is Sue Kachula, and I live at 5310 Dixon in Sterling Heights. I've been a resident for 32 years, raising my family here. I have five children that actually are graduates of Sterling Heights High School, and they also work in Sterling Heights. I also sit on a commission since 2005 for the city and volunteer often, and I am also elected on the Board of Education. This is my third term. And what I actually wanted to say, I had something written about the project, but, you know, as elected officials, it's very, it's very difficult to make decisions. And we, you know, recently we just closed a school in Sterling Heights, and it's very hard to hear parents, you know, being very upset about their school closing. They've been, they bought their home because they wanted to live there and in the community, and all of a sudden, the school is closing. And we take it very difficult, but we, when I hear at these meetings, you know, the Planning Commission had lack of information, the City Council has lack of information, everyone becomes a lawyer, everyone becomes a, you know, an investigator and tries to find out. I know, as elected official, we have backup materials, we, you know, we have all the information we need, we need to make decisions, and if we don't, we ask for it, and we get provided that information. It's just when we're, everyone, I guess, when you have change and someone needs to get used to change, and when you go, especially with, like, our parents that are moving to Sterling Heights into another Sterling Heights school, you know, you go to something familiar, and then you kind of just start to bring in things slowly. And so, as the city of Sterling Heights has been changing over the last 32 years, and if someone said that Kroger has been empty for so long, almost every shopping center, just as recent as 2009 or '10, were empty, right? There was only one or two supporting, especially, supporting businesses in those areas, 15 Mile, 16 Mile, 17 Mile, Ryan, especially those shopping centers. And from the decisions you guys have made, look, they're full, right? Businesses are being built, residents are working. So, not just only for the residents, but many of them are seeking jobs. This is so positive. Many people live on fixed incomes, and it's not because they're lazy, not because they don't speak English, and not because, you know, of whatever circumstance it is. There's many people, as the veteran was saying, there's a lot of homeless veterans, and when cities come forward and try to make positive changes, and as a decision you're going to make today, I'm very proud to support an organization that stepped up and said, you know, we're going to do this, and we're going to build, and with, you know, help from the city and voting from residents and from people that think these types of things are positive, this is how we grow. And I understand the hard decisions you guys have to make. So, I just wanted to come up here and just let everybody know that I'm really in full support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kachula. Anyone else on the public hearing? If not, I'll close the public hearing, and council, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Sarowski.
Resolve to approve the application by CCF Development LLC for a mixed-use planned unit development on approximately 10 acres of property situated on the east side of Van Dyke, north of Riverland, PPCM-1207, subject to the terms and conditions set forth in the planned unit development agreement, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city.
Support. Been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mrs. Sarowski?
Yes, I do have a couple of questions, and then I do have a couple of comments. So, to Mr. McLeod, through the chair, to Mr. McLeod. What is the expected need? I'm always a safety, I have concerns about safety and how we can make sure that these residents, especially if they are on a fixed income, possibly elderly, have issues with transport, mobility. Why one elevator? Mr. McLeod.
Mr. McLeod.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, that is the way that the architectural plans are set up now. Obviously, as this go, if this goes forward, they would be subject to a full building and full fire review. And so, if the building code or the fire code dictates additional elevators, they very well may be putting in additional. And this is a concept plan approval. I mean, so we have a lot of information in front of you. We have more information than we normally get. But for that particular question, again, if the building department, as part of their review, says for a development of this nature, you need two, three, four, whatever that number is, the applicant would have to comply with that requirement.
Okay. Thank you so much. Again, to Mr. McLeod, how many retail spaces are being approved or are being proposed in this development?
Mr. McLeod.
Thank you.
At this point, it's simply a space that is being approved or would be approved. It's 9,000 square feet. So, with many of our centers that get approved, if it's a standalone shopping center, most times, they'll show what a typical split-up would be for tenant spaces, but in reality, until they start seeking out users and users start to actually come to the space itself, that'll dictate how many tenant spaces are ultimately provided there. It could be one 9,000-square-foot user, it could be, you know, four users that make up that entire space. So, not until actual users become validated or become, you know, actual is the point where number of tenant spaces is determined.
Okay. And we're allocating approximately 65-ish parking spaces with the 135, only to one per parking space per resident. So, 65, or even let's go 50, is that going to be enough for that type of retail space?
Yep. So, as you kind of alluded to there, just to an aside, is that the applicant has indicated that as part of the leases of these units, that they'd be required or mandated to only have one vehicle per tenant space, and that's for the residential side, which does leave the balance of the spaces, a total of 190 or so, total unit or total spaces, so, yeah, about 60 or so odd spaces valid for the retail. Yeah, that, there is, you know, it's going to be a tight parking scenario, but as a downtown-type development, as part of an overall intensification of this area that the CIA calls for, that's part of the overall system, is that ultimately, if multitudes of these developments get approved, they all have conjoined parking lots and all shared parking agreements. Also, you know, obviously, we've talked about it, or it was alluded to by one of the residents, there's transit stops immediately adjacent to this, both, on both sides of the road, so that's viable. And I believe the Caldean Foundation, not to speak for them, but also does do some actual transportation for some of, as part of their services, so that would also be viable. So, there's a multitude of different aspects that go into that parking scenario and that parking allotment. And it was suggested by the Planning Commission that Mr. Manna, as part of the Caldean Foundation, do seek out additional parking agreements with abutting land uses, so that may be an option as well in the future, not part of the current proposal, but an option in the future, while there's several spots that have parking very close to them.
Okay. Two more questions. Through the chair, to Mr. McLeod. The one question would be, so I'm looking at this property, the site plan, and it looks like the entire building of the new development is bordering the current shopping center, so that the free land, I wish I had a pointer, so the free land behind and toward the river is actually what would be abutting to the property line of the Riverland Apartments? Is that going to interfere with their view, and what are we going to do about it?
So, in terms of where the property abuts, so you're absolutely correct. This particular building does not go any deeper. It actually is more shallow than the Riverland Shopping Center as it stands now. So, no part of this actual building development or parking development will go adjacent to the Riverland Apartments. That will remain as part of the open space, as part of the mitigation area between the floodplains and wetlands. So, again, no physical construction of building or structure would go adjacent to them. It'd all be adjacent to, if you see the notch in the property, I know it is kind of difficult to see without the.
I see the notch. Yep, right there.
So, in terms of the pointer here, basically, the shopping center goes to about that depth, just short of it, actually. So, but as you can see, the building and all the parking lot is forward or to the Van Dyke side of that notch, so to speak. So, again, everything back there is open, open space to remain, natural, planted area, wetland area, and floodplain area.
And one more question. I'm so sorry, but I had a lot of questions. So, we're not going to be, this does not require a wall to go between the end of the parking lot toward the, so the wetlands are not going to be walled off? That's still going to be a straight view, it's still going to be the actual surroundings, it's still going to be open space, correct?
Mr. McLeod.
So, at this point, there is no wall proposed. I did kind of scale it off because one of the questions that the residents asked was, you know, what is basically the distance or separation between the parking lot and their abutting property to the east? Just on this property alone, there is well in excess of 600 to 700 feet before you even hit the river, between the parking lot and the river. That is a significant distance, obviously, and again, that's the open space area. There will be trees there, there will be open space there. So, as of right now, there is no wall proposed between the actual parking area and the very back portion of the site.
Okay. And then, thank you so much. Done with my questions. I do want to say, I think this is a great use of this land. I remember, you know, I've lived here for almost 30-plus years now, 32, and that, back when this was the area, the site of an amusement park, very dangerous, very unsafe at the end. So, I'm glad to see that we have a beautiful use of this property. I do have concerns about safety, and I do want to make sure that we do have other, I know there's other questions, I'm going to stop my questions, but I think this is a good use of the property, and as long as we are maintaining the wetlands and maintaining the space for the residents as well, I think it's a great use. So, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Sarowski. Mr. Radke, anything?
Yeah, I have a few quick questions from Mr. McLeod through the chair. Mr. McLeod, there was some talk in the packet and on the residents here about parking spaces, and you asked, you know, the same concerns, but I saw in the additional material, there was some comparisons of this kind of development in other cities and what the standard parking spaces have been. Could you discuss that for us, please?
I'd be glad to. So, again, that was one of the items that was also obviously discussed at the Planning Commission. The applicant came back with some additional information in terms of their parking ratios for similar-type developments that they've been involved with or that their management company's been involved with, and they basically had a parking ratio of one to one in terms of the number of units versus the number of parking spots. So, again, here, that's basically what they're calculating, and then that would obviously leave a number of spaces left over for the retail usage. So, you know, again, you know, this is a unique environment to us because it's different. It's not our traditional, more suburban-type layout, but to gain a more urban environment, you know, one of the city's goals is to reduce the amount of paved surface in terms of parking lot and utilize that for better purposes, which in this case, we feel is in terms of a mixed-use development. So, with that, it's going to take a little bit of growing pains, but again, you know, the Planning Commission felt satisfied with the information provided. It staff feels satisfied with the information provided by the applicant, you know, to move this forward. So, and again, that information was provided for similar-type developments to this one.
What were the comparable cities? I saw Southfield was one of them, I believe Royal Oak. Was there anything else that I missed in there?
No, I think, and maybe they can provide a little bit more detail on that, but I think, yeah, you're right in terms of, there was Detroit, obviously, that's not the most comparable, but there was Royal Oak, Southfield. The other ones are skipping me. Let me take a look at it and I would maybe.
No worries. My second question has to do with the floodplain and parking. I know this was brought up at the Planning Commission, but a parking lot can be, can duplicate for floodplain use, right? They can use a parking lot, if necessary, as part of the floodplain, doesn't violate our ordinances or the zoning law, correct, Mr. McLeod?
That's absolutely correct. Parking lots, we have a number of parking lots within the city currently that are within the floodplain areas, and so it is an acceptable use. And so, one of the things that is in the development agreement is that the developer provide or the applicant provide an early detection system, so that way, if the residents there, if a flood situation is occurring or about to occur based on floodwater elevations, that those people get a notification, so that way, they know basically to move their cars or remove their cars from the situation.
My final question has to do with, I know we got an attorney from the Riverland Apartments here, and about a fence that I didn't see any information about. I was wondering if you could tell us about this fence and what's currently the plan for it.
So, I think it's part of, one of the things that we always do as part of a development is, as adjoining properties come to us and say, we understand there's development going on, or whatever the case is, we work with, between them and the applicant and the city to try to reach, you know, a reasonable, basically, end game in terms of what happens with that fence. Not to speak for the Caldean Foundation, but I believe at that meeting, they indicated that they were more than willing to work with the abutting property owners to come up with a resolution for that fence. That fence technically doesn't have to be there based on our ordinance, but in terms of, you know, again, not to speak for them, but I think that they said they were more than willing to work through that.
Thank you, Mr. McLeod. I still have a few more comments. You know, we've talked in Sterling Heights about trying to eliminate some of the, I call it parking lot blight that we have, especially around our, you know, Meyer at 16 Mile and Van Dyke stands out as the worst offender in my mind. I live at 15 in Van Dyke. Just huge parking lot that's never used, ever, and it's lighted all the time, and it's an impermeable surface. We talk about the fact that water can't drain these days, we have to have more drains and more flooding and more problems. We had a gentleman come to the podium at our last meeting and speak on this issue about how with more and more impermeable surface, we're just creating future drainage problems in the future. I think this is a very efficient use of what, to this point, has been a blooded parcel. Anyone who's driven down that way and looked at that says that we can find a better use for this property. So, I think that to use it efficiently, and I've also, this is, I think is tremendous, I've also been a proponent of more affordable housing in our city. I don't like to call it low income because these are not low-income people. These are working people who want to have a nice place to live, immigrants or anyone who lives in Sterling Heights. And I think as a younger person, instead of looking for an affordable house, I mean, obviously, I have a place to live, I think we have to find more ability to have people of different incomes and different backgrounds in our city, and I think that this will provide a way for them to live here and enjoy all the services that I know I love in Sterling Heights. So, I'm thinking of being in favor of this project unless I hear something that would definitely change my mind.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Radke. Anyone else, council? Mrs. Arco.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I think I'm going to refer back to a statement that you made earlier as to why we're here tonight, and this is to approve this PUD. And some of the questions that I had have already been answered, and some about the floodplain and the parking. But through the chair to Mr. Manna, if we could have him answer some questions for me? Okay. Mr. Manna, we've talked about the Caldean Foundation and the good works that it does, but I want people to realize that you are not just, I think I know the answers to these questions, but I need you to be the spokesperson for the organization. First of all, do you serve people from other religions?
Yes.
Okay. Other ethnic background?
Everyone who walks through our doors, welcome.
Okay. Are you for immigrants only or anybody that is in need?
We're for all Americans.
Okay. And the other thing is, is has the city used you as a reference for services that may be needed to be provided to a resident that needs help?
Yes.
Okay. So, we are certainly aware of, you know, of the good works that you do. The other thing is, I want to give you an opportunity to answer any of the questions that residents may have asked while they were speaking that you thought about and you'd say you would like the opportunity to respond to, and if you want to do that now, that would be fine.
Sure. Well, I certainly appreciate it, and I appreciate the opportunity, Mayor and members of council. Just a couple items for clarification. So, this is a housing project that will be open to the public, not just Caldeans or immigrants or new Americans. So, there is an application process, and we abide by all fair and equitable housing, just like we do for the services we provide. And we are, and from my understanding, there is no current agreements that we've defaulted And we are, and from my understanding, there is no current agreements that we've defaulted on with the city at our location at 15 Mile and Ryan. I think we've been phenomenal neighbors there. We brought a lot to that area, and we are now going to be investing more than $20 million in this new corridor, and we're thankful for the partnership we've had with the residents here in the city, many of which are from our community, nearly 20%, if not more. But I also want to take this time to tell you that we really appreciate the great work that the staff here, led by the city manager and Mr. McLeod, have been doing. This has not been an easy project, because we're dealing with the floodplain, and we've had several different variations. We brought in many different folks, but we do have an MDEQ permit that has been issued. I think many of you have seen that. But we are an open book. All of our finances are open, we're a not-for-profit. Many of the people who work for our organization, we also have numerous volunteers that are not from our ethnic community, or not even our religion. I just want to, again, stress that we're very proud Americans, we're very thankful for the opportunity here in the city of Sterling Heights. And if there's any questions, our facility is open from 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on every day, except Wednesday, we close early just to process all the applicants. We serve more than 30,000 people. Everyone is welcome there at any time to ask any questions.
Thank you for answering all my questions. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Through the chair to Mr. McLeod. We talked about the density of this particular project. Do we have any comparable developments that have the same density in the city?
Mr. McLeod.
Yeah, I think we definitely do. This one's just a little bit unique in that it pushes it all to one section of the property. But, I mean, if you look at the overall property itself, you know, realistically, 135 units on 10 acres is not, is not even close to our most densely populated property. But, again, and this is just a little different, this is something that the city has wanted to develop, in terms of this kind of concept, in this area of the city, for a long time. And so, it's something that's taking our master plan and our vision for this area and beginning to implement it, so.
The only thing that I would say is, this is one of those times when we have a parcel of land, and it's been sitting there for a long time, as an eyesore in some respects, and we have somebody that wants to come in and develop it. And then, we get really excited and think, you know, what are we going to do, and how are we, you know, let's do this quickly. I would just want to be vigilant to make sure that we don't make any mistakes here on the part of the city or the applicant, and not get too excited in this development, knowing that it has great potential, but that's what I want it to be, is a great project, and not have regrets after we've gone through the process. So, that would be the only thing that I would say right now, and like I said, tonight, we're just voting on the use or the PUD. So, nothing further, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Arco. Anyone else, counsel?
Mayor Taylor. Thank you. Actually, the majority of my questions have been answered as well. I do have a question through the chair to Mr. McLeod. Resident brought up the requirements on the DEQ permit, and who will be monitoring that is, those obligations are fulfilled? Can you answer that?
Mr. McLeod.
I'd be glad to. So, obviously, in all of our developments that have environmental constraints, our city engineering department works hand-in-hand with the agency that's regulating that, whether it be the MDEQ or the Public Works Office. So, the, keeping in mind, if this project ultimately is a go, they will have to go through a thorough engineering process, which will then be coordinated with the MDEQ permit, as well as all the rest of the floodplain regulations that the city begins to employ. So, again, there is a multitude of layers that is going to look at how stormwater occurs here, and how drainage occurs, and as well as the wetland. But ultimately, you know, the engineering plan will dictate, it'll be in compliance with that MDEQ permit, and then the city's engineering department will make sure that it's built exactly the way that it is. One of the other requirements, since we've been referencing the MDEQ permit so much, as part of that MDEQ permit, they're required to submit an ASBIL drawing. So, once it's done, they're required to say, we built it exactly the way the plan said it was supposed to be built. And if they don't do that, then the MDEQ will come calling and make sure that it is done that way, until the MDEQ signs off on it.
Okay. And I guess, we're used to looking at drawings that are the real drawings, and this is a concept drawing, so it causes a little, not confusion, but questions. So, in our drawing that shows the floodplains and the wetlands, will there be any retention ponds on the property as well, and where would they be located?
Yep. There'll be one retention pond, so it's immediately on the, I guess you'd call that the east side or the northeast side of the parking lot. So, it's a large oval area that's, again, right off of the parking lot itself. So, that'll actually collect the stormwater as it comes off the parking lot. And then, the detention pond will then be designed to drain into this overall system of floodplains and wetlands. And again, the MDEQ has been involved with this for over a year at this point. So, they know exactly what's going on there in terms of that. So, again, that'll be married with our engineering process, but there will be one detention pond. Again, it's right off of that parking lot.
I guess the, using parking lots as a floodplain came up, and I think the one that really sticks in my mind is Serenity Veterinary Office, because when the Red Run Drain overflows the banks, that parking lot can be flooded out. My concern is, the parking lot is almost parallel with the back of the building. Where Serenity, there's that parking lot is the buffer between the drain and the building. So, that's not a concern, that the building is so close to the back of that?
So, in terms of, so the parking lot is one thing. In terms of its elevation, it's allowed to be within the floodplain elevation itself. So, as you reach the eastern side of the parking lot, it'll be lower relative to the floodplain elevation, so there may be additional water there. As it comes towards up Van Dyke, there'll be potentially less water. And keeping in mind, this is after a 100-year storm, and I understand, you know, that we seem to be having a lot of 100-year storms lately, but, but that's how design process works. And so, but the building itself is designed to be two feet outside of the floodplain elevation. So, irregardless of where that building is on the property itself, our ordinances and our regulations require that to be popped up out of the ground. And if you remember going back to, I'll just flip back to here real quick. So, you see that patio space that's on the front side of the building? Not to speak for the design engineers or the design architects, but I'm guessing that might have a little to do with the fact that they had to pop that building two feet out of the ground to get it above floodplain elevation. So, realistically, the building itself will be completely above board, two feet above floodplain elevation, even at the 100-year flood, so the water will not touch the building itself in terms of flood, or first-floor area, or first-floor grade.
Okay. And that's all I have for Mr. McLeod. If I could, through the chair to Mr. Manah. Mr. Manah, can you tell us the approximate cost of rent for the one- and two-bedroom apartments? Do you know that at this point, or?
We have some estimates, but I don't, do we have actual? Come on up, John.
Come on up. It's on the microphone.
Thank you.
Does he have to speak through me?
No.
No, I'm just kidding. Shanghai's 5090 Queen Oaks, Chelsea. This building will have two different forms of rent structure. Affordable at 60% area meeting income, and market rate, which is market rate. So, the market rate units are going to top out. The two-bedrooms will be close to $1,300 a month, it's a very high level. It was supported by our market study. And the one-bedrooms will be at about $890 for the market rate. The affordable is really geared by HUD. Those rents are established by Housing and Urban Development, and I think will be at $640 on the ones, and up to $780 on the twos, at current HUD levels. They're going to be refreshed in a little bit here in October.
Okay. And I'm sorry, what percentage is going to be the HUD housing?
It's 40% of the units will be set aside at 60% AMI.
Okay.
So, roughly, if we have 130 units, it's something like 60, just under 60.
Okay.
We're still running through some financial models, so I don't want you to...
No, no, I'm just a ballpark, just a ballpark. And also, will you have available, like, buses to take people to the grocery stores or to the shopping mall, or?
You know, it's a good question. So, a couple things. One on the parking, if I may.
Sure.
We are going to be having conversation with the center next door and the Henricksons about some shared parking use. And then, we do currently run programs. We actually have a loan fund, for example, when we help our clients find employment. We're placing some 70% of the people that are coming in to the center in full-time jobs. We then guarantee a loan for them, and help them establish credit, and help them buy a car. And so, we provide, we help them that way, but we also have shuttles. So, part of this will be to provide some shuttle services to our residences.
Okay. I think I am all set. Thank you, I have nothing further.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Mrs. Gasky.
Thank you. Mr. Manah, you can stay right there. I have to say, this is a very unique project. We talked about doing a project like this years ago, so you're number one. So, I would like to ask you some of the questions that were brought up by the residents this evening. First of all, who is going to own this project? Is it the LLC, or is it the foundation itself?
It's the LLC, but the, it's a single member, it's the Caldean Community Foundation.
Okay. So, the LLC actually is the foundation?
It'll be a subsidiary.
Okay. Who is going to manage the apartments? Who is going to do the leasing? Who is going to qualify the tenants? Because obviously, they have to be employed, credit checks, so on and so forth.
Right. So, we went through an exercise, so we've hired an architect, we've hired a general contractor, we've also went through that same exercise for a manager, the property manager. Originally, we selected formidable, but we are talking to other agencies, and you know, that'll come up when we get to a phase when we start construction.
Okay. So, your intent is to have a manager on-site?
Of course, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
In regard to the property in the rear, this is approximately 10 acres. You're going to build on the three acres, so you've got approximately seven acres, which are considered the floodplain. What is going to happen with that? Because I read someplace where you have to relinquish title to that. So, what are you going to do with that?
So, we've started some discussions about what to do with that property. We've actually had some discussions with the city even to, you know, either purchase the back end of the property once there's an appraisal. We've talked to the city even of some discussions of making it a public park, but most of it, as you know, is wetland, so it can't be touched. So, we're looking at different options at this point.
So, that means that it basically cannot be used. It will be owned by someone else, but it cannot be used, because there is no ingress or egress to that property because of the river, correct?
Well, currently, there isn't. We have no intention, and because it's mainly wetland, there will be no use for us.
Okay. And did they say no use?
Say that, I'm sorry?
The MDEQ.
Yes.
Weren't they the ones that said you need to get rid of that seven acres?
That's more of an issue when we get financing from the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, or HUD.
Okay. So, that's going to be my next question. Financing, is financing in place? Do you have some ideas? Do you know where you're going to go? This is not going to be funded by the foundation, it's going to be outside funds, correct?
Not entirely. The foundation has already spent more than $1 million on this property, is acquiring the property, so we have full ownership of all three parcels. We've also paid for some engineering work, we've paid for the Phase 1 and Phase 2 assessment on the environmental. We've also paid for some additional surveys that were needed for the property. But the rest is going to have to come from private donations, which we are seeking from members of the community, and also some financing, whether they be traditional banks, or the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, or other sources.
Okay. So, you will look to other sources, you're not, the point I'm trying to make is, you're not depending totally on your foundation to finance this project. You're going to borrow funds from other sources, which I'm assuming you will pay back with the rents that you collect.
Correct.
Okay. I lost my train of thought. My next question coming up. Oh, in regard to the requirements for the stabilized, I don't quite know how to put this, because I'm not a builder, the stable ground for the actual building. I read someplace where you're going to have to dredge some of the wetlands to use some of that soil. When you do that, have they told you, are you going to have to bring in fill, good fill?
So, there's a cut-and-fill requirement, but I'm going to defer to the engineer. Maybe he'd be much better at answering that than I would, so.
Who wants to take that favor? They're very shy.
My name is Dave Nona. I'm a volunteer with a foundation, but I'm a retired consulting engineer in soils and foundations. So, in terms of the foundations, you're right, we had a fairly detailed soil investigation performed at the site by professional engineering associates, and the soil conditions at the site right now cannot support a four-story building on regular shallow foundations. Regular shallow foundations would be, you know, foundations that are three and a half, four feet below the, below ground. So, we will have to use some special foundations for the support of the building, and those foundations can go into two types. Either piles, piles are basically poles, either steel, wood, or concrete, that are driven into the ground, in this case, to depths of about 30, 35 feet. And basically, what these piles would do, would carry the building load into the good competent soil below the upper soils that are not very strong. There are other ways that we're also considering, based on our, the recommendations of our consultants, and those would include, they're called geo-piers. Basically, the system would, would consist of drilling through the soft soil, down to competent soil, and then filling that hole with the stone that is compacted with a big hammer, and basically, then that become, that stabilized column becomes part of the foundation to support the building. So, we are taking care of the foundations. You know, we cannot afford to have a building, you know, spend $20 million on it, that will experience settlement. So, everything is going to be engineered to make sure that the building doesn't stop.
Well, that was my question. Are you, Mr. Manah, you're financially prepared to handle any additional expenses that might come up? Right hand.
I, I've never lied, so you don't have to worry about that.
I'm just joking with you, okay?
I may want to say that, you know, this special treatment of the ground, we anticipate will be, will cost us maybe an additional $250,000, $300,000. So, you know, when you compare that to the total cost of $20 million, we still think that that is affordable.
Okay. And my other question was, will you have to bring in any fill for the dredging that you do?
Well, that's a different situation, not related to the foundations, okay? So, this question, or my answer, is going to relate to the issue of the floodplain, you know? When you have a site in a floodplain, according to MDEQ and Corps of Engineers requirements, we cannot bring in any additional fill to change the volume within... we cannot bring in any additional fill to change the volume within that site, okay? So if we're gonna fill one part of the site, as we are doing in the front three acres, because we have to bring up the building above the flood plain level, we have to excavate an equivalent amount of soil. So if we're bringing in, let's say, approximately 10,000 cubic yards of material, we have to excavate 10,000 cubic yards of material from the back seven, seven acres, so that at the end of the day, the volume or the water holding capacity of this site stays the same.
Okay.
Okay? Yeah. Now, the 10,000 cubic yards of material that we excavate may not be suitable to place as engineered fill, because the, the fill at the front has to be good sand or good clay that's compacted in layers, that's placed in layers and compacted to support the floor slabs. So we may, out of that 10,000 cubic yards of material that we excavate, we may have to move most of it outside of the site, it may be topsoil or whatever, and bring in new material, you know, to place in the front.
So the soil that you remove, you have a place where it goes? The contractor would?
Yes, yeah, that, that, that would be part of the site work contractor, so, well, you know, after we complete our engineering, we'll know exactly how many cubic yards have to be taken out, and how many can be used. If it's good sand, we can use it at the site.
Okay, okay. Well, sounds like you know exactly what you're doing.
Thank you.
One last question. Do you get to pay us any taxes?
Yes.
On the whole project or a portion thereof?
So, we've been talking to the city about that, so we, we have requested a payment in lieu of taxes, based on the affordable units of the project. And so, currently, and we're working out the agreement, the required-
Pilot program?
Yes. Payment in lieu of taxes, right, pilot. And so we're, we're working out the details of the payments with the, will be part of the PUD, I'm assuming.
Okay, but the balance of the property, like the, the commercial and the-
Yes.
I wanna call them market rent, but it's-
Market rate.
They will be paying their fair share, correct?
Correct.
Looks like a beautiful project. It seems like you have your cards in order, and you know what you're doing, and you have the right people that are going to keep that $25 million project above ground.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Yanez?
Sure, why not? I, so, through the chair, Mr. McLeod, you, you made a statement in regards to any changes to the PUD. So, we're voting tonight, we, we pass this PUD, it is now on us, right? On the City Council?
No.
We're the ones that are approving the PUD?
Yeah.
We are not? So, maybe I should ask the attorney?
You're approving-
Which attorney? I'm sorry, not the mayor, not the mayor.
Tonight's agenda item is to approve the PUD.
Do you?
Okay, so we're approving the PUD, all right. So, you had made the statement that should there be any changes, you may have to come back to us. So what rises to the level of a change that you would have to come back to City Council and, and get another vote to make these changes?
So, changes that would typically prompt additional council action would be, let's say, like an increase in number of units, or a, or a change in setbacks, where the building was moving closer to a property line, if there was additional parking that would go into the environmental area, those kinds of things. Slight deviations in terms of placement of landscaping, or small changes in building facade materials are typically handled administratively. I mean, so I, I don't think council wants to be burdened with, oh, well, they moved, they changed an evergreen tree to a maple tree kind of decisions. I mean, those things kinda go on administratively as part of the site plan review process. But anything that is deemed significant in terms of impacts to the outer world, so to speak, so again, number of units, where that building's located, building height, extent of, of environmental impact, would all be coming back before council. And again, we've had that happen in, in other scenarios, whether it's been through a PUD or through conditional rezonings. Administration takes a hard look at it, makes a determination as to whether or not the impact is significant enough to bring back before you, and then, you know, in some cases, it could go all the way back to Planning Commission if it's very significant. I mean, but most changes, you know, that were deemed as normal significant, if you will, would simply come back before council.
And, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say that, you know, I, looking at this project, I have a, I have a number of concerns myself, and I, I think we talked a lot about them. But you know, the, the parking, yeah, we're, we're limiting it to, you know, one per resident, but you know, people have guests. And, you know, egress, one way in, one way out, I look at that as, as, in my, my old job as a firefighter, I think, what if I have to get a ladder truck back there, right? And what if that egress is blocked in and blocked, or blocked, and no one can get in or can get out? Environmental, I, I, I think I'm, I'm comfortable with that. This is really close to a highway, and cars go off the road all the time and run into buildings, we, we see it all the time here, and cars going down Van Dyke aren't doing 25, 30 miles an hour, so that's, that's also a concern. Having said that, having said those, expressed those concerns, I, I think this is also a great opportunity to develop a piece of the city that has really struggled to be developed. And I think because, you know, this is our first crack at it, we can't get it wrong. And if we get it wrong, we're not gonna be able to do this again, and we're not gonna be able to develop the rest of that stripped-down M53 in the way that we're imagining that, or Van Dyke, in the way that we're imagining in, in doing this. So, I, I have conditional faith, I'm gonna keep an eye on this project and make sure it goes the way that everyone tell, is telling me that it's going. I appreciate the concerns of the citizens who spoke out tonight, and, but I think this could possibly be the shot in the arm that our city needs for this, part of our city. And I also agree too, that we need more affordable housing in the city, and so therefore, I'm gonna support this PUD. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Yanez, and thank you, council, for your comments and your questions, and we've had a very thorough discussion. I believe most, if not all, of the residents' questions have been answered. Personally, I just would add that I do believe that this is another kind of transformational project and an area that is badly in need of it. And I know Mr. Manah has worked very hard to secure a piece of property there and do the engineering and reviews, and has worked with our economic development team and with our city management and city attorney to create a project that we can all be proud of, and despite a number of challenges. I think this is, is a really impressive project that I'm, I'm enthusiastically supporting, I can't wait to see it done. Thank you for your investment in the community and the work that the, the foundation does. So, I am, like I said, going to support it and look forward to seeing it, being at the ribbon cutting someday, hopefully sooner rather than later. So, without any further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Manah. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on any item on tonight's consent If not, council, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Kosky.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight, it is a consideration item, and this is to consider approval of the fiscal year 2019-2020 Community Development Block Grant One-Year Action Plan. We have a presentation from our city planner, Chris McLeod, and Mr. McLeod.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, Mr. Vanderpool again. Before you is our annual review of the Community Development Block Grant Program in terms of allocation. So I'm just gonna run through this very quickly, in terms of, some of you have heard this before, the numbers have changed, but the program generally remains consistent as to where it's been in the past. So, that being said, so our 2019-2020 allocation, this has actually already been confirmed. Many years, we've been in front of you describing CDBG funds with an estimation. This year's a little different, the number came in early, our allocation number is about $791,000, just short of that, actually. So as part of our program, we divvy that up. So the general use of funds is designed to, the general intent is to say housing revitalization and to revitalize neighborhoods, as well as improve community facilities, particularly for those in the low and moderate income person range. So again, these funds are generally allocated, again, for those low to moderate income folks, as well as any of our senior population would also be eligible for this. So, the funding considerations, when the, the CDBG team kinda goes through this, when they take a look at how to allocate the money, how many residents will benefit from the program? As the requesting agency complied with past CDBG contract requirements, did the agency attend and present their requests at a public hearing? And was the requesting agency able to answer the questions about their program? So this all kind of starts, and it starts to formulate the end of the prior year. So this past December is when this all started to get formulated, and as the months moved on, there was public hearings and, and allocations in terms of how this, the CDBG funds were ultimately allocated. So, in terms of the public service funds allocation, that can be, and this is a mandate, no more than 15% of the total allocation can be used for public services. So there's a number of public services which requested money. We're happy to say, everyone that requested money via the conditions and guidelines set forth by city and HUD guidelines, anyone who requested money received some allocation. So Turning Point, Salvation Army, Care House, Wigs for Kids, McRest are some of those that are going to be getting money through the CDBG funds, again, if this is approved. 65% of the overall allocation can be used for capital projects. So this year, Hamilton Drive, concrete replacements are going to be the, one of the major projects is, is being funded as part of the CDBG product, project. Senior Center Roof Replacement, Minor Home Repair Program, as well as Shanner Tower Generator Replacement, that's some of the administrative costs related to that. So that totals about $528, almost $529,000. The remaining funds then are utilized for administration of the program. Teresa Jarzib in the Community Development Program, or Department, is responsible for implementing CDBG on a daily basis. So she goes through and she secures all the, all the procurements and all the different contracts for all the different aspects of CDBG as they move through. She conducts all the public hearings, so on a, on a daily basis, she is our CDBG person. So with that, that is basically what the CDBG program, this, again, this is our 45th year of doing this, but this is our, our total allocation of, again, about $791,000 that we receive from HUD funding from the federal government. So with that, I'd be more than glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. McLeod. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, council, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolve to approve the fiscal year 2019-20 Community Development Block Grant One-Year Action Plan as recommended by the Citizens Advisory Committee and city administration, based on the entitlement of $790,782, and authorize city administration to complete the federal application and secure the funds. Support.
It's been moved and supported, any discussion? Mrs. Zarco.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I think Mr. McLeod has explained the process, as well as the percentages that can be used for what area, and I'm certainly glad that we were able to help anybody that applied for some assistance, and we were able to give them some money. So, I have nothing further.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Zarco. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Radke.
A couple of quick things. I just want, I see that we're repairing two roads, Newell Drive and Hamilton Drive, as part, as part of the appropriation. I was wondering, what qualifies a street to be used under the community block grant funds for, for repair? I'm glad we're fixing streets, I just was curious as to what roads are eligible. So-
Through the, through the chair, Mr. McLeod.
So in terms of, for a road to be eligible, obviously, the city has to deem it in a, in condition where it needs to be fixed and is paramount to be fixed. But the main HUD requirement for CDBG funding is that it lies within one of our low to moderate income areas, as defined by HUD. So, obviously, those are certain segments of the city. So again, you know, the roadways that are ultimately chosen, we've, we've done several road projects in the past, but all of them have to fit within that low to moderate income area.
Excellent. My second question through the chair would be about the DPW tree planning. The past two years, we've approved $10,000 through this for tree planning, and we didn't this year. Did DPW not submit a request, or was it deemed not as important as some of the other issues in the appropriation?
I don't believe DPW submitted this year. Yeah, I think that they, at this point, they didn't submit, because I think that, you know, realistically, DPW has been doing a phenomenal job in terms of receiving grants. And so I think they're gonna be more than busy in terms of planting trees through their grant program. And then obviously, CDBG is a very finite amount of money, so the thought was probably realistically that, you know, let's use that for some of the low to moderate income projects, and then leave the grant monies for the planting of the trees.
And then my final question through the chair would be about McCombe Literacy Partners. I see that they're zeroed out in this budget. Did they not apply for funding, or did they just not get any funding this year?
So again, anyone who submitted, you know, via the guidelines and the proper timing, did receive money, so with that being said-
Because it's zero, not, not a line, I was just curious about it.
So in that point, they did not submit, you know, and request money and, and met the guidelines. So, again, anyone who wanted money or requested money was given at least some form of allocation.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. McLeod, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, anyone else? No further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is to consider a First Amendment to the Development Agreement for the Verandas Planned Unit Development situated on the north side of 14 Mile Road west of Maple Lane in Section 34, Case Number PPCM 1161. We have another presentation from our city planner, Chris McLeod. Mr. McLeod.
I apologize, Mr. Mayor, that you have to hear from me so much tonight, but this is a simple request to extend the timeframes within the existing PUD agreement for the Verandas. If you remember, this is a development that was approved by council several years ago now, as a PUD, as an 807 home or 807-unit development that would serve 55 and older, as they like to phrase it, 55 and bolder, on the 288 acres, that is Maple Lane Golf Course. Again, this would keep partial portions of the golf course, and then also develop a variety of different housing units, single-family duplexes, fourplexes, townhomes, and senior housing units to total those 807, again, while maintaining a portion of the overall development, or golf course. And as part of that PUD agreement, they were given some, for very unique circumstances, some allocations in terms of water usage rates. So for the golf courses specifically, no other portion of, of the actual development. So they are simply just extending that out, or requesting an extension of that out, to be based off of when the development occurs. The current agreement basically says it's 2019 to 2021, we're obviously already halfway through 2019, development hasn't commenced out there, based on, you know, conditions and unforeseen conditions through the applicant, but they are still moving forward with everything. And again, they're just seeking to extend out this agreement for a two-year period to be commenced once construction starts. So with that, I'd be more than glad to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you, Mr. McLeod. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, council, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolve to approve the First Amendment to the Development Agreement between the City of Sterling Heights and Maple Lane Holdings LLC for the Verandas Planned Unit Development, Case Number PPCM-1161, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the First Amendment on behalf of the city. Support.
It's been moved and supported, any discussion? Mrs. Zarco.
I have no questions. I understand exactly what Mr. McLeod said.
Counsel, anyone else? No further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is to consider a request by the Stevenson Touchdown Club Incorporated, doing business as Titan Touchdown Club, for recognition as a local nonprofit organization for the purpose of obtaining a state-of-Michigan charitable gaming license. I believe we have members of the applicant, representatives of the applicant in the audience. Anybody want to make any comments before we open it up to the general public? Come on up.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, Justin Newcomb, head football coach, Stevenson High School, just newly hired, we completed our first season. What we're looking to do is to obtain a state gaming, charitable gaming license, so we can provide additional supporting equipment for our players. can provide additional supporting equipment for our players. One of the equipments that we just purchased was called Guardian Caps, $5,000 purchase to help reduce impact concussion rates with our players. So this is some of the items that we're looking for.
Okay.
Any questions?
If we have questions, we'll bring you back up.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Be close. Yes, no, you can sit down, but we're going to see if anybody else wants to come up. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? If not, counsel, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Resolve that the request from Stevenson Touchdown Club Incorporated doing business as Titan Touchdown Club Sterling Heights County of Macomb asking they be recognized as a local nonprofit organization for the purpose of obtaining a State of Michigan charitable gaming license be considered for approval, provided, however, that this action is not an endorsement of an organization, and the city of Sterling Heights should not be listed on any promotional materials associated with their charitable gaming activities.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Uh, Mayor Taylor, just a comment. This is a routine situation that the state has made every booster club or any nonprofit go through in order to raise funds for their, whatever their cause is. So I'm in full support of this, and I wish you well.
Counsel, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Just to point out personal privilege, I played football with Justin at Cozno High School, we were in the same class, so I'm glad to see him doing so well at Stevenson High School. Like I said, this is just a kind of a pro forma request, and I intend to support it. Good luck at Stevenson, Justin.
Counsel, anyone else? With no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Good luck to Stevenson Football Team. So that concludes that portion of our agenda. We will move on to communications from citizens. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda? I'll start with Mary Marsonak.
Two things. Just a couple of days ago, we had the sirens going off, a warning for troubled, dangerous weather. I have a question, though. Back in my day, as a member of council, when the sirens went off, you turned on the city channel, and it told you what to do. We don't do that anymore. I want to know why not? Because that's your first reaction, is called, put on the city channel, find out what's going on. So I hope we go back to that again, because we obviously don't have an emergency manager anymore, do we? Oh, we must have cut that one out. So let's go back to doing what we have to do. We're automated now, it can all be arranged, sirens go off, and besides that, I know that they had what to do on the loudspeaker, but don't ask me to go out and enclement bad weather to watch a tornado to hear what's on the speaker. Not a good idea, right? Now, the next thing I have is for Mr. Yanis, as a retired firefighter, I'm sure that you are aware of the fact that we do, we are mandated by state law to make sure that our fire hydrants are in working order and look good, correct? There's mandate, state law. So we seem to outsource so many things, janitorial, tree trimming, hanging the Christmas decorations for the Sterling Christmas, on and on and on, and blah, 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 blah. So Mr. Vanderpool, why can't we outsource painting and maintaining all the fire hydrants this year? Summer's just starting, let's outsource them. Don't depend on teeny boppers to do it, because you know, eh, it may not happen. So can we outsource, reappropriate the money, let's get those jam fire hydrants done? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Marsonak. Anyone else under communications? Yes, sir.
I need some questions answered, and I hope you're going to let me talk today. Yesterday, my daughter was in an accident. This is going to be really a good thing to listen to. It was up on 18 Mile Road and Mound, okay? My daughter called me, and I came down to the accident site. The cars were already parked inside where Tim Horton is. I'm going to go back to Tim Horton a little bit later. The police was there, and two tow trucks came up. I didn't call for a tow truck. I went to the officer, I says, I want to have my own tow truck take my car to Vitale. He says he can't do it. I said, what are you even talking about, I can't do it? He says that it's a part of the city. The city takes your car and takes it to the lot, the city lot. And I says, that doesn't make no sense. My car, it can't go nowhere. Now, okay? He told me he's not going to lose his damn job over my going and arguing with him. He says, if you want to change things, come to the city. Then one of the guy, the drivers come up to me, he says, hey, listen, I just talked. He says, if you pay me, you pay me cash, I'll take your car and take it to Vitale. Now, I already told the officer, I want to call my own insurance, just can't do it. The driver came up three times and asked me for money. To me, that's extortion. Now, are we going to play games? What does your people doing here in this thing? Is, are we going to, like, City of Detroit, where you're double dipping, take my money, then you go and hit the insurance company? I want an answer before I go and take this legally, because that is extortion, plain and simple. Another thing I want to know is this city, right now, is a sanctuary city? Because evidently, I can't talk. My home value is going down the tubes. I got multiple people living in my subdivision, in each house, don't even know who in the hell they are. They come and go, come and go, and then you shut me up. This has to be a sanctuary city, is it? Please let me know. That's all I got to say.
Okay. Anyone else? Take you, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you for letting me speak to you tonight. My name is Jean Huntin, and I live on, I've lived on Independence in Sterling Heights for 28 years. I'm, as I said, a resident of Sterling Heights, and I'm also a volunteer with Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America, the Oakland-Macomb Chapter. And I'm here tonight to enlist your aid in helping to stem the epidemic of gun violence in our country. Specifically, I'm requesting that the city of Sterling Heights issue a proclamation declaring that June 7, 2019 be proclaimed National Gun Violence Awareness Day, also known as Wear Orange Day. This request is being made to honor the over 36,000 people who are killed annually by guns in our country. Sadly, for every person killed, an average of two more are wounded. Gun deaths take many forms, including suicides, domestic violence, accidental shootings, and homicides. Gun violence is now the second-leading cause of death for American children. By proclaiming the first Friday of June as National Gun Violence Awareness Day, Sterling Heights would join hundreds of other cities across the nation, bringing attention to these tragedies. The color orange has a long and proud history in the gun safety movement. Orange is the color that Hadiya Pendleton's friends wore in her honor after she was shot and killed in Chicago at age 15, just one week after performing at President Obama's Second Annual Inaugural Parade, or Second Inaugural Parade in 2013. Hadiya's friends decided that her death wouldn't be in vain, and started wear orange in her honor. They chose orange because it's the color hunters wear to say, don't shoot me. Whether worn in Michigan by hunters, New York City by activists, or Chicago by Hadiya's friends and family, orange honors the 100-plus lives cut short and the hundreds more wounded by gun violence every day, and we demand action. Since the first National Gun Violence Awareness Day in 2015, hundreds of communities and organizations continue to commemorate that event by wearing orange, holding community events, lighting buildings and skylines orange, and issuing city and state proclamations to raise awareness. I'm asking that this May 21 meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council, you will see the importance and proclaim June 7, 2019 to be Wear Orange Day in the city of Sterling Heights. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you, next.
My name is Pamela Lidline. Although I'm not a resident of Sterling Heights, I have family who live here, I shop here, I've attended events here, and I consider Sterling Heights part of my extended community. I'm a gun violence survivor. On July 4, 2012, my 34-year-old daughter, Michelle Packard, called me from Lansing approximately 8:30 PM to tell me that she, her fiance, and his six-year-old daughter were excited to spend a beautiful summer evening celebrating Independence Day with a picnic and the fireworks. They were also celebrating her recent graduation from Michigan State University with a PhD in Biosystems Engineering. They would soon be moving to Maryland, where a job with the U.S. Department of Defense awaited her arrival. An hour later, I received a frantic call from her fiance telling me that Michelle had had a seizure, was unconscious, and was in an ambulance on her way to the hospital. I too started to panic, but he assured me it would be okay. At about 11:30 PM, he called back to tell me a CT scan found a bullet lodged in the base of her brain. I knew immediately it would not be okay. A friend drove me to Lansing Sparrow Hospital, where I found my beautiful daughter on a ventilator, and a doctor telling me that her brain had been torn apart, and there was no chance of survival. We waited for her sister to arrive from Iowa. We told Michelle we loved her and said our goodbyes. She was pronounced dead at 9:30 AM, July 5, 2012. The police believe someone shot a gun in the air from a distance of up to a mile away. Her killer has never been identified. My daughter became a statistic of gun violence in America. Today, I ask you to proclaim June 7, 2019 as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Sterling Heights, to honor Michelle, Hadiya, and all victims and survivors of gun violence in America. Be aware that an average of 100 people die each day in America as a result of gun violence. Be aware that approximately 4.6 million US children, US children, live in a household with at least one loaded, unsecured gun. Be aware that in average, in an average month, 50 American women are shot to death by an intimate partner, and many more are injured. Be aware that approximately 44% of American adults report knowing someone who has been shot, and nearly 25% report that they or someone in their family have been threatened or intimidated by someone using a gun. Be aware that approximately 3 million American children witness gun violence each year. Be aware that Macomb County Board of Commissioners voted unanimously last week to declare Wear Orange Day on June 7. I hope Sterling Heights will join the list of communities in Michigan who have made a proclamation to designate June 7 as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you for sharing that with us. Yes, I'll take you next.
Good evening. I'm Amy Rodriguez, and I live on Rinaldi in Sterling Heights.
Can you move the microphone up just a little bit?
Sorry. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. And as a resident, I am also asking that the council consider issuing a proclamation declaring June 2nd, sorry, June 7, 2019 as Wear Orange Day for National Gun Violence Awareness. And as it's already been stated, gun violence is the second-leading cause of death for our children, and this issue is a major concern for our kids and our teens. Just last month, in the Stevenson High School paper, The Vanguard, there were two separate articles regarding gun violence, and one was about public mass shootings, and the other was about teenagers wanting stricter gun control. In one article, Alex Kay talks about how children and teens have become so accustomed to the threat of death by gun violence, and that elementary children are taught to keep themselves safe from concepts that they yet can't understand. And he also writes that this is traumatizing for kids to hear about shootings at other schools, and for them to think about what their goodbye texts to their parents will be. And Stavro Hannah wrote that shootings appear to become the common norm in America as students fear arriving to their schools and having a safe day. Shootings are not likely to stop, but bringing more awareness to them can help future deaths from gun violence. So hopefully, the more awareness we can bring to this issue, the less this will occur, and the safer our children will feel when they are out in public and go to schools. So this is a very important issue, and I hope that you will declare June 7 a gun awareness, Gun Violence Awareness Day. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on communications from citizens? If not, I'll close that portion, go on to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpool, anything?
Mayor, just quickly, a couple of things. There's a resident who asked about fire hydrants. She'll be happy to know that the city has entered into a contract to paint fire hydrants in addition to supplementing our own in-house fire hydrant painting, so we're trying to get as much done as possible. With respect to the towing comments, we'll have to look into that specifically. It sounds very strange, but I'd want to look into the details before I comment it. The city has not taken an official position with respect to sanctuary status, but I would like to read our vision statement from our Visioning 2030 Plan, and it says, "A vibrant, inclusive community for residents and businesses that is safe, active, progressive, and distinctive." So I wanted to highlight that. And I think that's really it, in terms of responding this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Mr. Kachubski, anything tonight?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay, counsel, I'll open it up to anybody who has any reports or new business. Mr. Yanis.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank my friends from Moms Demand Action coming tonight and talking about gun violence awareness day and the importance of it. While I am not a gun owner myself, I have many friends who are, and the number one thing for them is safety, you know, making sure that their guns are properly taken care of and locked up and cared for. Unfortunately, that's not always the case. You know, here in Sterling Heights, we have two police officers that are dedicated to putting on active shooter training, and if you haven't had that training, everyone here should take it. It's incredible, and it's scary at the same time that you could find yourself in that situation. So I hope, come our next meeting, we can have a discussion about maybe recognizing June 7 as Gun Violence Awareness Day, and join hundreds of other municipalities across the country in doing so. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Yanis. Anyone else, counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
I just have two brief things. Without objection, I'd like to place an agenda item for a proclamation to support Gun Violence Awareness Day at our next meeting.
Any objection to that being an agenda item at the next council meeting? If not, I think we can do that. Mr. Vanderpool will prepare something for our consideration at the first council meeting in June, which is the Tuesday, so it'll be beforehand, and we can get the word out on social media and whatever else. So thank you for being here and bringing that to our attention, and for the courage to share your story as well, ma'am.
And also, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Radke. I was hoping also to place on the agenda a discussion of Mr. Vanderpool's performance for the last year. I think he's doing an excellent job, and we've been asked to submit our comments to him, but I'd like to have a group discussion. I believe under his contract, he can have it in... I believe under his contract, he can have it in private if he'd like, but I'd like to place it without objection on the agenda, so we can discuss it as a group.
All right. Any comment on an agenda item for the next council meeting as proposed?
Yeah.
Mrs. Zarco.
I think we can have a discussion, but I think when we talk about employment union contracts, that needs to be in closed session.
That's, that's why, I agree.
I agree.
Okay. So, Mr. Radke, you agree it should be in closed session?
That's what I thought I said, but...
Okay, I'm not sure that was clear.
My fault, yes.
You would like a closed session?
I believe he has to request it, but I believe it should be in closed session.
Agenda item regarding Mr. Vanderpool's employment contract, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Performance evaluation.
Yes, evaluation. He's required to do any, we're required to do it at the council any...
Any, any issues with that, Mr. Kaschubski?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Any objection from the council? Hearing none, I think that you have direction there, Mr. Vanderpool. Anything else, Mr. Radke?
No, I just, I just want to say one more thing. Thank you so much for coming and telling your story, ma'am. It's, it's such a tragedy. I am a gun owner, but I, I take steps to make sure my weapon is secure, because you have to be careful, because this, this senseless violence is, I almost got teared up just listening to your story. It's such a sad thing, and it shouldn't happen in America. We can do better. We need to do better. Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Radke. Anyone else, counsel? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.